I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, so we'll start with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda? Yeah, Suzie.
Thank you. I'll be very brief, but I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Suzie Merritt, and I am a South Burlington resident and a parent in the South Burlington School District. I am deeply honored to be here tonight to celebrate poor seniors at South Burlington High School and their older siblings. I'm lucky enough to have one of them here in person, Pavitra Sharma, and I'm also recognizing Pravin Sharma, Deepak Pokhar, Dio Pokhar, Bowana Nambula, and Dinesh Kadka. In the midst of interviewing Pavitra and Deepak for an article, it dawned on me that their story is a reflection of our school's ends policy at its best. And since I know our school board to be a group of people who value the good work of our students, I was compelled to invite Pavitra tonight to represent all six of the young people, and I would like to give a brief celebration about them. All six have roots in Bhutan. They moved to Vermont from a Nepalese refugee camp, Deepak and Dio in September of 2008 when Deepak was in sixth grade, and Pavitra and her brother, and her mother is here also tonight, thank you, in December of 2009, and Bowana and Dinesh more recently. I have learned from them that life in the camp was not easy. In fact, it is difficult for me to imagine. School instruction was limited. Dio once told me that it was not unusual for elephants to stamp, peed through the camp and damage the school, and parents often had to travel out of the country to find work, sometimes for years at a time. Pavitra and Deepak recently reflected on how, when they arrived in the United States, they knew just a small amount of English. The learning curve required for these young people to succeed in school, which they have, and for their families to find housing and jobs, which they have, boggles the mind. My words this evening cannot do justice to the resilience, determination, and courage of these six young people I named and their remarkable families. Their stories, to me, are nothing short of miraculous. And here's the best part. The stories certainly don't end there. All six have plans for the future, plans that make their families proud. These plans include attending college. Pavitra herself right now is trying to decide between two colleges where she's been admitted, entering the military, and pursuing work. We can study the Search Institute's research on resilience, and we can listen to Angela Duckworth's TED Talk on grit, and yet the best, the very best way we can learn about these attributes we hope our graduates and we as adults will have is to listen and learn from young people and their families who have lived it. As Pavitra said so eloquently, "I feel that you have to do something on your own and work really hard, you become a better person." "We've been through so much," she continued, "but now if we face something difficult, we say, 'we can do this.'" I'd like to end with words from a speech that Dio gave back in April of 2010 when he was a freshman in high school and had been invited to be the keynote speaker at the Vermont Bhutanese Association Thank You Volunteers Day, a day intended to thank the volunteers who had helped refugee families as they acclimated to life in Vermont. In his speech, Dio thanked the volunteers for, and I quote, "sharing their wisdom and goodness with all of the new refugees arriving in Vermont." Pavitra, to you and also to Pravin, Deepak, Dio, Bowana, and Dinesh, I'd like to tell you that it is an honor to pass Dio's lovely words back to you this evening, and thank you and your other five friends and family members on behalf of your South Burlington community member for sharing your own wisdom and goodness with all of us. We are the better for it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, Suzie. Thank you, Pavitra. It's great that you came out. Are you junior, you said, or senior? Excellent, excellent. Well, I hope you enjoy your last two, three months. Two months? Something like that.
Is there anything you'd like to let the school board know? No pressure, but open it up to you if you wish. Yeah. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, we have a couple, a few amendments to the agenda. We're going to add a new hire to the consent agenda, Jake Orr. We're going to move the IRS audit, which is currently what? Number on here, which is currently number 14. We're going to move that to number nine and a half.
Right.
And then also, we're going to strike the asset protection 2.7 off of the agenda and reschedule that for next meeting.
Right.
So announcements, we don't have our students here to give the announcements.
We don't, with the board by your side. You do have those. You've got a variety of things going on. May 8th, Common Roots Tag Sale is Friday. Spring Vacation, as you know, is next week. Orchard Spring Fling, May 29th. Again, these are important dates to a lot of our community. Also, mark your calendars to join the citywide festival for the Vermont Veterans Memorial Park, what we're calling City Fest. And again, this is, I'm drawing a blank on what it used to be called.
Night Out.
National Night Out. It's different than that, as it has a much, a little bit different venue. But mark your calendars for August 15th from 10:00 to 10:00 p.m., 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And a list of activities are there, and will be posted around and through the paper, other paper that is. Other than that, a lot of activity going on. This is a busy week. It's nice to have some good weather out there. We have a lot of activities going on in the school and outside as well. So, those are announcements.
Excellent. Moving on to master planning, financial stewardship, city and school collaboration, airport, Chamberlain Committee.
Yeah, we're adding more.
All in 30 seconds.
We add more and more, I know. So, master planning, as you know, your task force, most of you had the opportunity to go to the community meeting. They're currently meeting as we speak. I started my time over there at 5:00 o'clock. They'll go till around 8:30 or 9:00 tonight, taking all of the feedback that they've garnered in more detail, along with the questions that have come in, and we'll be working on kind of those next steps. So, again, important work. We're looking at backwards planning, kind of with a June 3rd board meeting, and maybe a June 1st city council meeting, but we're looking at pulling together a task, a steering committee meeting to provide kind of those findings in and around that timeframe. So, we're working on that currently. With regard to the airport and Chamberlain work, today was the day that marked the beginning of the home takedown. I don't know what progress they made, if they took any down today, or if it was more about staging. I think it was more about staging. We do have Bart Micali, who's going to be meeting with their group weekly to kind of understand, you know, what homes they're going to be taking and what kind of disruptions will happen on that particular day and week. So, they've been very inclusive. We're certainly available to call anytime to either the airport or to Justin Ravid, who at the Department of Public Works. Not much to report in addition on the city stewardship, or stewardship plan. Obviously, the board's aware of our work around ADA compliance, elevator, and that scoping. John's been working diligently to get that lined up with Bart and all of the bid requirements and all of the kind of Phase 1 of the elevator project at the high school as a component of that. So, let me pause and answer any questions that people might have regarding any of those.
Al?
Is this going to be a time to chime in?
Sure, absolutely. Any more questions from the board?
So, we're here because of the work that the master planning task forces do, and we were both present at a community meeting the other night. It was fantastic, our opportunity to get people from all walks in the community together to talk about these issues. I think there were 200 people there. There was a lot of discussion around, you know, economic development, city center, green space, and schools. One thing that I was pleased to hear was, the 200 people, 90% of the table said that education was their number one priority, which is fantastic. And I guess the piece for me is, you know, this decision on whether or not to sell Central School is really a school's decision. It's really about education. I don't, I don't think it's even close in terms of waiting it next to those other factors. The city centerpiece is really separate. And if we're going to sort of take advantage of this opportunity to sell Central School, we need to really have a strong point of view that shows how this gets us toward our educational goals in the community over the next five, 10, 15 years. You know, they asked at the meetings of what school configuration people supported, but I think that's a tough decision for just a resident to chime in on. I think what we really need is a strong point of view that says, hey, look, here's where we are today. Here's the changing landscape in education. Here are budget challenges. And here's the brass tacks on how this decision could give us a tailwind to get to where we want to go, right? You know, we know, people want to hear about programming. We want to know sort of what problem we're trying to solve. We understand that we have to replace facilities, but for me, and I think for many others, that's a secondary decision. Let us know sort of how this facility's changed, where's operating expense to be able to fund programming, to make our schools sort of better. And I feel like, I guess the question to the board is, how and when will you guys be involved in making sure there's a strong point of view around that? Because my perception is sort of the further down the path we get with the community, the harder it is to put forward that point of view in a productive way.
Can you respond to that?
I think your points are great, Al. I mean, what we're trying to do, what we're attempting to do, what the board and the city council did, was to charge, you know, a task force committee to try to go out and do what they thought was best with the representation of the school lens and the city lens, so that we don't look down the road five, 10, 15 years and say, "We should have thought of this on the school side, or we should have thought of this on the city side." I think everybody certainly recognizes that this is more heavily weighted on the effects and impact on schools. That said, the respective boards did not want it to be isolated from one another. I think they are on track. They put a lot of time in. They're on track to get to kind of the things that you said. Where are we today? Where do we want to be tomorrow? What do we want? And how are we going to get there on the school side? And the board's going to receive those, and the board may say, hey, of those two choices, we don't like either of them. And we want to put out something totally different in front of the community to perhaps be voted on or not at all. So, I think the process is going well. It's complicated. It's complicated. I think the meeting was a good dipstick, though, of, you know, education is a number one, and that, and we had a good cross-section of our population. To say we had a, you know, good percentage of our pop, would be wrong, because even though there was 240, still is not anywhere near what we would like. But I think your points are well taken, and, you know, I've jotted some notes, and again, I do think it is consistent with the charge that the board and the council gave. So...
I know at times, sorry, I know at times it can be difficult to have sort of a real conversation with that many people in the room, or that many varied interests. Just based on the fifth-grade to middle school experience last year, I think you've got a lot of NPH parents who will wait for that real conversation before supporting this, to really understand, you know, hey, we're not just sort of doing this because we can, but instead, here's how we connect the dots pretty strongly to where we want to be from an educational programming standpoint. And so, maybe we ought to think about sort of a school-only or education-focused forum where we can start to have some of those discussions. Because I feel like otherwise, people might end up spending a lot of time sort of on the current process and not really be supporting it to their fullest just piece of...
Good.
Yeah, I just was wanting to understand more what the process looked like, some of the conversations between the school board and the task force and the city council, because it was great to go participate in that forum. It felt like, as a participant, there were a lot of assumptions that were already made, and then you're kind of voting between different buildings and infrastructure versus really looking at, how does money flow? What is behind the decisions? What does the programming look like? For me to look at, well, these configurations of this building, and a new building, and an old building, and this is third grade, and this is K-2, it didn't give an opportunity to have a conversation of, well, what does the curriculum, what does a program look like with those different scenarios? And what's behind those options even being the ones to come to the table? And so, I'm just, I worry as a parent and as an educator and as a resident about there being just a quick, or a decision-making process that focuses maybe on some of the wrong things and just the buildings and the objective things you can get your hands around versus, how do we use money? How do we use space? How do we use programming? How do we make these decisions based on what is behind those assumptions and what's between them?
Can I just ask a question? I understand what you're saying. I just am curious if either of you has sat through any of the task force meetings and listened to the conversation that's happened there?
No.
I would just encourage you to do it. I do it on a regular basis. I know a lot of the board does. And some of those conversations that you're talking about are actually happening, you know, in depth there. And those people were chosen in many ways to represent all of the community. And it's a pretty varied task force, and there's a lot of pretty in-depth conversation about many of the issues you're talking about. So, anyway, just...
Yeah, I think it's a good suggestion. I do think sort of like we're part of the broader community, and what we went to was the master plan community meeting, and this point of view was missing. And so, I can sit there for all those meetings. I don't know sort of how effective I'll be there. But I do think, like, trying to figure out how we sort of get a little bit more united around the schools. I hear a lot of times, oh, there's only 20% of households that have kids in school. But you know what? That's actually the largest voting block in the city by far. I think 20% of people voted in the city at this last election. And by the way, we've got 90% of people in that room that say education and work. I think we've done an opportunity to engage this community around education stuff, outside of just the small task force type meeting that we could, you know, that we could seize. And one last thing that I failed to do at the beginning is, thank you for your work on the school board, and thank you for your work with the master planning committee. It's a ton of time. I'm not there, and I totally appreciate people are putting in long hours. And I just want to see it be successful.
Absolutely. I think it's great. I think your feedback is really good, Al, actually. And I say that from the perspective, you know, and I think we need to encourage more as we go along. And we're coming to an end, but this is a perfect time for us, having kind of that, you know, I think you've been informed. You read the other papers, so you've kind of been at a maybe a little higher elevation of this and coming to that. I think you provided, you provide good feedback to us. And again, I'm a liaison back to the task force, and again, I'm not there tonight, but I'll go back, and I think that this is good feedback for them to hear, is, you know, from where we sit, you sit, you know, as a parent, a community member, homeowner, what does it mean? Where are we going? Where are we going specifically with education? And again, I think the charge is fairly clear, but, you know, we're going to need to shape that up so that it's really clear, and it takes us from the today to where we want to be, and what does it do along the way, which is kind of what I think you've just summarized. So, thanks for coming out.
Any other questions or comments on that item? Let's move on to the superintendent's report, then.
So, on my, under my report, again, I can be really brief on this one, or we can be really long. But we talked about legislative update, you know, you being a legislator, not that I'll put you in that, but just wanted to provide a little bit of an update. A lot of activity going on in the legislature. Many of you have been down there. A lot of, again, a lot of bills have been introduced or moving along the way. The ones that we've specifically been watching from our vantage point have been, what I'll say, majorly kind of four bills. H-76, which is, dealt with the no-strike, no-imposition bill, H-361, which is still active and being engaged, which is the public, the whole funding mechanism in education, S-9, which is the child protection bill that's out there, and H-49, school choice. We've been, we've been active. I think H-76, a lot of you have read about that, the past week and a half or so of activity. At the present time, has lulled, I'll say that. H-361 is in the Senate and is being kind of called over and worked on. We'll be paying attention to that from our vantage point here in South Burlington. S-9, we've provided some feedback on, the whole child protection-related matter, in that particularly there's some real, really strict charges on the felony piece, which we're very, very supportive. I'm saying I am very supportive and share that with the board and the legislature of child protection, although the felony charge and the right notification is in need of some clarification and corrections, as it's really too harsh. And then, H-49, a school choice. And for us in South Burlington, we had, for a good period of time, money followed students if they were being tuitioned to us from other communities. With the passage of Act 129, that went away. You can receive a student, but no money follows them. In H-49, that works to correct that. That's currently in play now in the legislature, and we're hopeful that people will be watching that. We have testified, Patrick Burke testified on Monday, and, you know, we look to have some additional opportunity to provide feedback. So, that's the quick summary. I don't know if there's anything people want to add.
I do have one question. What do you have as a current update on dual enrollment?
On, under Act 77?
The funding of dual enrollment.
Yeah, currently, the funding has, it's going to remain unchanged, as far as I understand. It allows courses, students to take and participate in higher ed courses, and it looks like it's going to continue to come out of the general fund and not be on the shoulders of the local SU or district at this time. So, that's where we're, that's where we're currently at.
Just a couple of quick updates as well on what you talked about. First of all, H-76, that bill's essentially dead at this point. Whether this issue comes up again in this biennium or not is a question. So, and whether there's going to be any additional efforts to reform collective bargaining in this biennium is also probably doubtful, but it's possible that something could come up. S-9, the felony component has been taken out of the bill by the Committee on Human Health, and the Judiciary Committee is taking up testimony on that. And there's some effort by some folks to put something else back in, but much less than what was there before. And I don't know that there's a lot of stomach for actually having that component in there. But essentially, that part that was causing so much problem would have, it was a failure to protect a child. And if you had a reason to know a child might be in danger of physical harm and didn't do anything about it, you're subject to a felony of up to 10 years in jail, which, yes, you do want to certainly have people watching out for children. And there are already laws on mandatory reporting, and if you fail to report, there are consequences and such. And there was a lot of pushback of having such a somewhat wishy-washy concept of having a reason to know something and then being subjected to upwards of 10 years felony. So, that's gone away, and I don't think it's coming back. So... And finally, H-361, in the Senate, there's been a lot of work around merging of small schools, and my understanding, a lot of pushback, and it's not entirely clear where that part is. Haven't heard much about what's going on with respect to a cap, which is a part that's very much of interest to South Burlington. So...
And H-49, anything on that? Not that I'm trying to get like, you know, firsthand information.
No, the most important, the most important thing is, this is the first time, this session that, you know, in the fourth time that Patrick's been to the State House, that he actually said hello to me.
Did you actually hear him talk to him?
No, I was unable to...
It was recorded. You can hear him.
Yeah. Is there a link or something?
I think he did, from what I understand, I did talk to one education committee member, and he had very good testimony.
He always does a good job.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's the legislative update. I don't know if there's any other questions from the board, or...
Okay, Board yearly calendar review.
So, what's your, in your packet, again, thanks to Delina and all her good work, as usual. We have kind of just repopulated this. There's a few things on here we'd like to just talk about. I think we're all fairly aware that we reshuffle and rejuggle. You know, I think we've done a good job of recognizing, you know, budget development between November and February, and we've identified that. But I think we have to even be a little bit more mindful about the activity that happens around the budget time and not think there's going to be big monitoring reports that are going to happen in there because of time. A few suggestions in conversation with John have been, a couple maybe alter changes would be, again, we're asset protection, and John, chime in if you think differently, but 2.7, February, could move to May. And we also think financial conditions and activities could perhaps move to December. And again, there's a mindset for that, which I'll let John explain.
Yeah, there's a couple of reasons. The asset protection, you know, we've talked a little bit. We don't want these reports to just be, let's look up the same thing we did before. And asset protection is a huge, it's a huge topic, and it's, it needs more attention. And I think, once the, when the budget gets done, then the audit and the retirement is all in this March area. If it could be pushed to May, and in effect, we're doing that because I haven't finished it. But I think that that makes sense, and you get, it gets highlighted by itself once a year and not in with other reports in the financial area. That's the thought. And the second thing that David mentioned is 2.4 showing up in January. It would make a whole lot more sense to have it in November, late November, or December, because 2.4 talks a lot about projections. And in our charter, we have to, for the budget, do year-end projections. It's just, it's part of our charter, and we're coming to realize that. So, it would, it just makes sense to do it together.
But we also have it in September, right, John?
Yes, and that's the, that's the preliminary look of July, or June 30 is the last day of the fiscal year. It's in September, because you need some internal financials to see where we ended the year. So...
So, are you suggesting doing it in September and again in November, December?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And it would, it would answer that question that came up from Citizen Budget Group and actually from Elizabeth Fitzgerald about where is the, where have we done this year the details, and where are we going to end up, you know, that projection? And that's part of city charter, which we've, so that's, that's my, those are my two suggestions.
So, are you saying move it from the January spot to December or November?
Yes, yeah. I think December 1, it would come, it's typically when the first budget is rolled out.
So, the first meeting in December?
Mm-hmm.
And the asset protection to the first or second meeting of May?
Either one, yes.
Is there any objection, the rest of the board, to that change? Okay.
So, the other piece to highlight before you talk more about it is around the, you know, other business and reports on the very bottom. And, you know, we, this has been a place where it's kind of been a brainstorm around other things that you might want in the upcoming year. So, certainly, if there are things that you'd like to add in addition to what's already there, this is the time to, I think, talk about it. I want to try to push back a little bit and say, you know, on things that are here, where could some of them go in monitoring? And, you know, we're currently working through that in our future agenda items, so that when monitoring reports come up, that either we're saying they are embedded in there or will be embedded in there. I think I have to also be careful, otherwise if I, if every suggestion and every want requires then to put it up somewhere, and then it becomes embedded in monitoring report, you know, into the long term, then I could have monitoring reports that become, you know, difficult to construct and difficult to review. But that said, in some... But, that said, in some cases, they are, you know, kind of a check and balance type situation. So, if you do want to add some other things, and you, again, once this meeting's over, we certainly would populate it.
I think one of the things we hope would happen here is that we could winnow down this future agenda items. So, have you had a chance to reconcile whether any of these can be stricken because we now know when they're going to be taken?
Right, and so what we did in the last time, Dan, we put, you know, the monitoring report two point one, and we, and we've annotated it beside the checkmark. So, we aren't adding more checkmarks. We now say it's going to appear in the two point one oh.
One of the things we said is let's take the checkmarks out and put the date certain into those items.
Yep, so, so we could do that. Right now, what we did is, is the next step is, we, we aren't adding any more, monitoring report two point one, and two point one-two and two point one-oh come up, we could put the dates in there, remove the, remove, I'm fine with that.
To me, that makes sense.
Yep.
Because it, the idea, the idea here was to take some action against these things, and if the action is to sort of date, that's.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, here's, I, I would suggest actually a more significant change. A lot of these are put into monitoring report two point one-zero, the education quality standards, perform, let's see, what else we have, EQS, I guess it's mostly EQS, going into monitoring report two point one-zero, but I think we just really found out from just having done that, that that monitoring report is a little narrower than what, at least I was after, wanting to talk about these more. I think these are more part of ends monitoring. The EQS and curriculum content, the common core, which you have down in August, and one of the other business and admin reports. I feel that those should be part of the ends monitoring, and I also think that the ends monitoring has to happen at least every other month, and not just four times.
Mm-hmm.
And, and these kind of, and that's kind of how Stuart somewhat was talking about.
Getting those things off.
The EQS and such as well.
I mean, we need, we, we're going to have to approve our EQS. It has to be a board-approved thing in October, right?
Well, the path, yeah, the path of graduation requirements, yeah.
So, that sort of has to be separate. I don't think that should be a monitoring thing at that, at that point in time.
We're going to bring those required things back to you when, when they're needed. Remember, the future agenda items came, they started quite a while ago, as you can see by the checkmarks, and part of the, because we were, we were sharing, we used some important things, and a lot of you said, hey, we'd like more information about it. So, and, you know, since that time, we've obviously had conversations about things like EQS and flexible pathways and, and PBGRs and things of that nature. But in, in the hopes to not just lose it, right, it was, it was keeping it here, and from my perspective, where we didn't just have to keep it on the agenda as future, where could it be embedded in the practice? And I, I don't disagree with what Martin is saying at all. I'm not saying it's necessarily a monitoring report, maybe in ends monitoring. I don't necessarily, I mean, I think more diligent conversations need to happen around the policy governance lens and where, where things would go.
Right, and I, I guess that's the way I was looking at this, is that, all right, how are we doing with flexible pathways, and how does that fit into our ends that we're trying to achieve? And I'd ask the same question for each of these. Maybe that's somewhat separate, you know, for one of them, or however they get mixed in, but that's, because those are as directly related to our achieving our ends as anything that we really hear about. And I think we need to hear more about those, and continue to hear about how we're doing on those initiatives. So, my suggestion is that, in fact, we do have more ends monitoring, I don't know if we need it monthly or every other month, and what's the view of?
I would agree, I mean, in concept, I definitely agree with you, Martin. I'm, I'm not sure how frequently we need to do it, but I just wanted to chime in that I, I had that same response to, to some of those, those EQS things. But I, not being on the board as long, I would not want to venture a guess on how often we want to cover those. The other thing I will just throw out, since I have the floor for a second, is, is, since this seems like to some degree a work plan for the board through the next twelve months or for a twelve-month period, I'm not sure, I'm seeing right now where we're working on the things related to, the things we just talked about earlier in the meeting, how our programs work with the city center and our master planning, so. Is there something I'm missing on this that kind of speaks to that, or do we need to add something to speak to those issues?
Well, I think there's always going to be, so the, the, the policy governance answer is superintendent evaluation and monitoring around what you hold me accountable to do, to not be surprised, to navigate, and, and those things. So, that, that definitely is an avenue whereby which you are directing me. That said, I think there's a, you know, a lower level need to know, to be informed about those critical things that have significant impact. Budget development, budget communication, assessment monitor, you know, the whole, the whole litany of things that go along with ensuring our students are making the, you know, the progress that we, that we want. So, part of this is always to look through the lens of the policy governance, and where should it rest? At the same time, what does the board need to, to have to feel assured that we're, you know, we're doing, we're doing the, the good work that we need to for, for the community and the students? So, I, I think my suggestion is on the ends monitoring, let me work back with the central office on thinking of that, that schedule. I want to be sensitive to the amount of time we often, I don't want to get into this where we got to defer, 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 because then that's not good planning either. I recognize that things come up where we say, we, you know, we can push that off, but we ought to make, ought to make sure that I have enough time to get the things to you from the sta, our staff, and it's not always a rush rush, and we need to leave enough time for budget conversation and development, so that we block ourselves off. And we've kind of done that in here a little bit underneath, where we've identified budget conversations in January, February, and March.
So, I'm certainly okay with it going into the ends thing, but I would just advocate for let's getting it in there explicitly, not just the general category, ends monitoring, but ends monitoring this month is going to be, include those items.
So, so for instance, I would suggest, and you tell me which month it'd be best, that one of the, one of the sessions where we hear about ends monitoring, we hear about how the budget affects our achievement of the ends. You know, something more direct than we've perhaps had in the past, whether that's December or January. The other one is the proficiency-based graduation requirements. When we talk about that, that should be connected up to the ends as well. I know we have a separate, you know, decision to make, but it has to be made in the, under the umbrella of meeting our ends as well, doesn't it not? And when we talk about how the S back and common core is doing, once again, that should be under the rubric of looking at our ends monitoring.
Ends monitoring, yeah.
I mean, we could, it doesn't have to necessarily, well, I think it has to be at least every other month, but if there's more happening, because lots of these initiatives are occurring.
Yeah, so from, from, just real clear, I'd like to, I'd like for the other business to essentially always be new business. I would like the things that we identify in other business to be embedded, if they're important practices, that they're embedded somewhere else, which is what you, what we just talked about. It may be that there are some things under other business and admin reports that you'll, that will still stay there. But ideally, if they're important today, and they were important last year, then, then they probably ought to be important to our work within the policy governance framework, which is what we're, I think what we're saying.
But, but the one, I, I will add one other thing, though, is that, when, when we do ends monitoring now, once or twice a year, I kind of lose where we were the previous time, and, and I'd like it to be frequent enough so that I can see whether or not there's progress being made, even if it's somewhat redundant, you know, if it's coming back, if we hear the same report for three times in a row, we'll have some questions if I were hearing the same report three times in a row, for instance. It's just, I, I just feel that we, we don't give it enough attention, and that, that's why I'm really pushing to have it at least every other month.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think.
We'll go to work on that.
Of this is to, is to get a draft of what the annual plan's going to be, with the idea that it's going to be more or less the same year to year, once we own it. But I think we have a special situation, and I think was brought up here earlier, and that is that I think we're close on the heels of being able, of needing to be able to voice how it is we're going to handle the output from this task force, what the process is by which that's going to go, and what kind of timetable it's going to have. I mean, we've been kind of sitting here, in my view, watching the task force kind of slowly move for, out in time from where we thought it would be, so if we'd had a calendar, it wouldn't have been effective anyhow, but we must be getting close to the point where we have to worry about that. And if, and if, for example, it's going to be, at least be in the budget for next year, then even that's not that far away, when you consider what has to happen. And that's not an annual thing, I don't think we're going to have to do this every year, okay?
Right, that's an example.
But I think it's an important ad hoc thing, okay?
Totally agree.
So, yeah, when?
Yeah, is that going to be on like July? I mean.
Well, you're, currently, you have it every, on every, on every, on every agenda.
Right.
And there's an update on, so far, along the way.
But we don't have any action or testimony, we have an update.
If we're getting a recommendation on June third, then.
Right, so Steering Committee is the avenue that, that was charged by board and, and the council.
But that's going to deliver something to us.
That's correct.
It's not going to decide anything.
Nope, and so I think, again, the board's going to have to have a conversation about what you receive and what you want to do, and so is the council around what you want to do, and, and how you're going to.
And that's a separate conversation than the Steering Committee. You know, we'll receive it from the Steering Committee, and then our next meeting, set aside a good chunk of time.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the way I see it. Obviously, what could be recommended is do nothing, you know, and that would significantly be different than.
Yeah, it's possible, but if there's action, there needs to be.
Do, do more, or, or what are you going to do? I haven't, I mean, as we move through this next phase, we'll, we'll talk more about, again, and I think, you know, as Al brought up, is you may have to have a little bit more of a publicly broadcast meeting that's going to specifically address ideas the board's considering, or, you know, something like that, so you engage that, your, your education. We certainly engage a lot of people, so we're right now trying to get you the set desired task that the task force was charged with. And the charge was to give you back a recommendation, and you'll receive that in and around the end of May or first part of June.
So, let me say it a little differently. My concern is this. I think with all this effort that's in place, there's going to be some expectation for urgency on our part, not, not critical urgency, but some responsiveness to it. And if we, I mean, we have a constraint in that we can't, we can't change the budget if it's going to have any effect on the budget until next March, okay? So, are we going to try to have something happen consistent with that date? And if so, what kind of calendar actions, what, what kind of calendar do we, would we have to support? Because if we don't do it, the next time we can do anything is a year after that. I mean, pending some special, really special action, I mean, we could always, I think we can always call a special thing.
Special vote.
But that would be the normal process, so that's.
I think, I think you're right. I think the board's going to have to, they're going to have to wrestle with those, those ideas and next steps. Certainly, there's nothing we can do, we've got an adopted budget, we didn't, we were very transparent in our budget, we don't, you know, we don't have any big plans, because we don't.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that the runway runs out, and we didn't even realize it happened, that's all.
I, I don't think so. I, I think, I think you've appropriately paved the runway, and I think you're moving down it. I think the task force is, is, is well down their runway, but they're, they're coming to the end.
Yeah, well, they're squeezing up against our runway with the actions they've taken so far.
But I, I don't, I mean, my only thing with this is.
Not that, not that they're wrong in what they're doing, it's just that.
I think it's really.
It's taken longer than expected.
Which is.
I think it's okay.
That's right.
I mean.
No, it's okay, but I just want us to understand that we have certain points in time in which it's normal for us to be able to do something.
Right.
It's not to say we can't do something extraordinary for, for the right reasons, but.
Yeah, I think you have, you have a lot of good options. I think all of the concerns, you know, that Dan raises are good, and Mark, I mean, we're going to need to receive it, we're going to need to think really diligently around the , the community, you know, response and sharing with you kind of their, their ideas and questions, but I think you have a lot of opportunities available to you to, how to, how, how to move forward, given the, the recommendation, so.
Yeah, it does feel like when we receive that recommendation, we're going to have to absorb that and be prepared to change our, our work schedule for the next X number of months, based on what we think our actions are going to have to be.
Right.
I mean, because we could think about, well, if we, we think we're going to get recommendation X, we could start to try to map out something, but that might be premature until we see.
I think that is premature, but my concern is that right now, the option list is still pretty big.
Right, agreed.
So, you know, and I don't know how long the, I mean, I don't know that we're really going to close this thing with something delivered to us on June first, or whatever that day was.
Right, yeah, yeah, agreed, yeah.
Suppose that's not till July first. Those things tend to not happen till October first.
Yeah.
Agreed.
So, enclosure to the calendar, we're going to make these changes, we'll bring it back again for another view. We're going to add some additional, and we'll, we'll, we'll add the, the additional monitoring report and bring that back to you as well. We'll maybe populate some of those things with some bulleted items that need to be included. And if there are things that you want, in addition to what you see here in the other business and admin reports, let's just add them, and you go through Delina, email Delina what, what else you'd like to have there. And we'll certainly put them here for now, and maybe we'll then figure out where, where they maybe go.
And I guess, can part of this also be Delina or somebody pulling the board members for availability for July and August, since those are vacation months to.
To meet.
In case we can't meet on the first, well, I mean, July is usually kind of a little bit more open as far as when we schedule that, that particular month's meeting, anyway.
So, you're wanting, so help me out, you're wanting to know availability for the months of?
I say July and August, because I already know that the first Wednesday, I'm not going to be available in August, but let's pull and see if we're going to have a forum for.
You kind of already know that.
We can do that, we can stay up for the next week.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I have no idea.
No, that's.
It's good.
We've got a little time.
And when I think Delina, I'll try to be your voice here. If there's anything on here that doesn't need to be here, let her know that, too. What do you think?
That's good.
Those emails are from flooding in.
Did she poke you, or was, did she poke you for that?
I did.
Or did she poke you when I was recommending other things? All right, thank you for that. Feedback.
Administrator reports, special education.
So, we are lucky enough to, hey, thank you for coming, folks. So, we're lucky to have with us tonight Joanne Godak, and again, we moved up the one item that's also the IRS audit, and that will be also part of Joanne sharing a little bit of that as well. So, welcome, Joanne, to a school board meeting.
How are you? Hello, any, we, I gave you a simple report, because I'm trying to keep things simple to people, you know, but my mission is to try and make sure that our kids with disabilities have access and good instruction, just like every other child in the district, and these are the resources and the ways that we do it, and the budget that we have this year. I think one of the most important things that David, that this school has been, school this year has been working on is the multi-tiered systems of support. There's always been a lot of talk about how expensive special education is at the moment, and it's probably the most expensive way to educate children, so if we could bring up a whole system so that it can be responsive to a variety of students, then we're going to hopefully save money and educate all of our students in a better way. We're really working hard to get that fully implemented, so.
Can you, can you give us a multi-tiered?
Systems.
Systems of support one-on-one, again, the more I hear it, eventually I'll fully understand it. And I'm going to say it because Patrick may, may not.
Yep, it's basically having a school system that responds to students' needs at the first, the first level. So, you're designing what they call a tiered system, where the first tier is instruction we provide to all, and we're looking at a universally designed first tier, where teachers are trained and can plan instruction that meets a variety of students.
can plan instruction that meets a variety of students. I'll let you fix that and I'll talk. So we're looking at that first tier being the best tier instruction, and then if kids are struggling, then we can offer them more through educational support system, which would be the second tier. So they would get this good instruction and then we would add some more. And then the top tier is really for our kids who have significant disabilities who really need to have intensive instruction. And it's tiered because everyone gets this and there shouldn't be that many students. And you can see our numbers are pretty good. I looked at our child count numbers over the, over the years, and we've remained pretty steady. Actually, our percentage of kids with disabilities has actually gone down in comparison to our ADM, so we're doing some, we're really doing some good work in South Burlington. So that's a piece of it, the tiered system, but along with that, you have to have a good climate across the district where people are willing to collaborate with each other and work together because special education is not like this separate womb place anymore. So people need to work together and understand how to work together and have the time to work together. We have to have a really good assessment system, which is another piece of the multi-tiered system. So that has to be, there has to be good assessments where we know where kids are at a point in time and know what we're measuring to see if they're making progress, a little bit like what your ends monitoring is, only on the individual student level. And not every kid we need to monitor that closely, but some kids we do. So there's assessment, collaboration, tiered services, climate. There's five. Oh, the fifth one is really the system. So, and that's where we've done most of our work because I think in South Burlington, each of the schools does really well at doing this, but they kind of do it in their own way. And so our administrative team is really working hard to have a system that really works collaboratively all together so that we have some efficiencies and a way to have some sort of, not policies, but practices that we're all using together so that as kids are in two to three different elementary schools are getting pretty much similar instruction and similar models, and as they funnel to the middle school and high school, they're getting a similar, similar model as well. And it's, it was, MTSS was the next evolution from RTI. I don't know if you've heard about RTI, but that was something that came out of the special ed law around response to intervention, where we were finding that we were waiting for kids to fail before they could be eligible for special ed, and they really weren't getting their eligibility until like third or fourth grade. And in RTI model, you start serving kids right away. And so the MTSS is sort of like a, it's a, just a bigger rendition of RTI, and RTI is part of that. So we, all of the administrators are on board with this, and we're working really hard. We have three or four teams going to Killington in June to continue this work. Stuart and I work really closely together to make sure everything's aligned, and it's a, it's pretty powerful, so I'm excited about it.
You've heard, you've heard me talk about that around our, kind of our district plan, and it's, it's really governed by the MTSS work, which is, for us in a school system, it's everything that we do. And there's, I'd say it's an excellent map that MTSS framework provides, and so when we're looking at professional development activities that gets us there, I mean, it's provided us with a really good structure to be able to define that work. It's already defined, defined steps for us. And so it's been really, really helpful for us to have the conversation around, as Joanne said, around instruction. Where are we? What do we need to be doing more? And it varies by school. And in some cases, our budget reflects that for certain areas that we need additional support in Tier 2. What do we need to be doing, you know, with those services to boost those up? So having our budget more reflective of, of those, of that data in supporting our MTSS work this year, and where do we need to be next year, you know?
And part of the work in the legislature, and I don't know if anyone's aware of this, is that the whole special ed funding is very siloed. So things are very siloed, and it used to be that you could be more flexible with that funding. And we can use like 20% of our special educators' time to do Tier 2 so that, to work with kids who are not actually identified for special education. It's really hard. We have to do time studies and look at all the time that we do, and Denise has to reconcile it and send it to John and make sure the money comes out of the right place. And I know the legislature is really looking at whether we can change that kind of funding mechanism for special ed. It needs to be flexible with, still following the laws because the money comes from the federal government in order for our kids with disabilities to really have access and get their needs met because they do have special needs. They need to have special instruction. But in order for our special educators to work in MTSS model, they need to have some flexibility to do that. And I think it, once we move towards that, it's going to be a lot easier for us to meet the needs of all students.
Is that state expenditure or something?
Excuse me?
Is that state expenditure?
It's the state funding that they're looking at. Federal funding is fairly minimal. That should be increased as well, so if you want to talk to your legislators about that as well. Because that access for kids, I don't know if you have any relatives or have friends with children with disabilities, but in order to access learning, if you have a physical disability or a cognitive disability, you need to have a lot of accommodations. Fortunately, with the technology we have now, we're getting kids access. They can, they can speak to type, they can have the text read to them. We have some children with multiple disabilities who are learning to communicate by using their cheek. I mean, it used to be that those kids couldn't ever access anything, and now we're finding out that many of these kids are going to probably go on to go to college. We don't know what the capabilities are for these children, and the, the ability for them to access the learning and be in the classroom with that first teacher, that teacher who knows the content, is really important. So we're pushing our classroom teachers to really accept all and really work with all these students. And it's been, it's been exciting to see that, how far kids can go. So, and you know, we're working on the high schools. We can have kids actually go up and down, upstairs and downstairs, kids who have, you know, mobility issues.
Do you see anything that might happen that would either change our ability to fund this or change the expectations of the system?
I see the, I see the legislature, I see the state legislature looking at how we fund, how we fund special ed and redesigning that. I think there's a big push for that. I don't know if they've been talking about it, but I know that our, the VCSA, the Vermont Council for Special Ed Administrators, has been having conversations with people in the State Department about that, the Agency of Education about that. As federally, I don't know if anything's going to change. They, it's, it's always been sorely underfunded. IDA's always been sorely underfunded, and, I mean, we've pushed for it for years, and there's a lot of lobbying going on down there, but I'm not sure that will ever change either. But as you see in the budget, you know, it's, it's like a 60, 60-40 split. So the state covers 60 and the, and the local funds cover 40%. So they cover a good share of what we do. And if we continue to build our multi-tiered system, there'll be less students that need to be funded through special ed. We'll be able to really address all. David knows my dream is to have everyone in the state dual certified, so we don't really have special ed, that everyone can just teach everyone. I've, I've already talked to the, to Secretary about that.
So what's your assessment of our climate in terms of the system?
Um, I think we're moving in the right direction. I see, I see each of the schools have their leadership teams now. They have data teams, they're really looking at data. I think that there are, there's work, I see in the middle school where those teams, like there's a special educator on every team, they work together to plan to really have all kids have access. At the high school, our special educators are now in departments, so they're not in their little silo. They actually are part of a department where a lot of collaboration goes on. The elementary school is a little bit different because there's so much direct instruction, and there's so much need for instruction in general. It's kind of a different ball, ball of wax. And because we have three elementary schools, we struggle with the amount of service that kids need, just like the classrooms, you know, when we need, when we get a couple of extra kids in one school, then we need to have another classroom teacher. It's similar for special educators, having three elementary schools. It's hard to have that scale to make sure we have enough staffing for kids.
So in terms of special ed, would it be, would it be better to have less elementary schools?
In my, in my view, I think it would be more efficient to do that. I think you'd be able to really maximize your resources to do that. I don't know if there'd be other, I, you'd have to look at the pros and cons about what that would look like, because I also think for access, I think some of those neighborhood schools are really good for kids. And I know our, you know, families really like neighborhood schools, so...
I think the other thing that, you know, some of our, our work as a district around early childhood work with growing kids in South Burlington has also, you know, plays into improved Tier 1 support, you know, for, for our kids, in that they're coming in, they're being, again, our childcare providers are definitely much more in sync with, with the work. We have Teaching Strategies Gold, which is very specific to, you know, good Tier 1 instruction at the developmental age feeding into our system. And so we, again, and Delina is to be commended around, and Joanne too, around the work that we're doing to, to make those connections. We've gone from a very low number of participants now up to, how many, 245?
Twenty, twenty.
Yeah, of children participating, you know, in our early childhood.
And that's all going to be larger next year with the universal. And we also are expanding our, we've had what we call essential early ed programs, one at Chamberlain and one at Orchard, and we are reframing them to be preschools. So they're going to be preschools, and we'll have slots available with a morning and afternoon session so that we have more, it's more of an inclusive model where there's more typically developing peers, because right now, when I go in those classrooms, there's a lot of kids with significant needs, and it's hard to learn when you're in a classroom like that when a lot of the students have trouble moving and talking, so we're going to have more of an inclusive environment. And we'll also have a early childhood special educator who will be able to go out to our programs, and an early childhood speech pathologist who will be able to go out to our partner programs and serve kids in those natural settings. So the goal is really to have every child in a multi-tiered system, have every child have access to good Tier 1, a good inclusive environment, and not be separated into a special learning place where we, research shows that you, you can't learn as much in that way, so...
And the schools that we have that, the state that have choice that are sending their students here, do we get a percentage of students there that would be sent to special ed?
The choice, we do excess cost, so we bill back for excess cost for our tuition and our choice students. So they, those schools act as the LEA. They work with us about what they think that child needs, but we provide it, and then John and I bill, we bill back for those services.
And do we have a percentage of students coming in that would seem logical, or is it high, or is it low? I mean, is that...
As far as kids with needs?
Yeah.
Um, that's a good question. I'd have to really look at, from, I have never really looked at the percentage, like for the Islands kids, what percentage of them are on IEPs? We do have a, a pretty good number, but I don't know what the rate is, whether it's more than the rate that we have here. That would be something for me to look at. I've never looked at that number.
And I'm just thinking about that in the context of, you know, if they can name multiple schools, if they're going to start looking at schools as specialty schools and how that all plays out over time.
And what we, what we believe is that, you know, we're, we would like every school, you know, to be kind of doing, you know, MTSS, as Joanne described it, is, is appropriate, and we'd like to see more of that happening. I think we're, because we're doing that, and I'm not saying we're far ahead or not, I'm just stating the fact that we're doing that, I think it does, people are aware of our work, whether it be in our schools or administratively that we're doing this, and I think many people are saying that's, that's the right, the right path. And again, we, we're working hard at trying to, to navigate through this, school by school for the entire district, but again...
Yeah, one of the other things I would like to leave you with is I'm kind of a nudge, as David knows, because I'm the advocate for kids with differences, and you have a lot of things that you have to look at. Ends reports, the proficiency-based graduation requirements, the personalized learning plans, the flexible pathways. Is there anything that I forgot? I'm sure there's a lot of...
Common Core, yeah.
Common Core, state standards.
Next Gen Science.
And when you're thinking, next generation science, when you're thinking about that, think about it from the lens of someone who can't read. Think about it from the lens of someone who can't move. Think about it from the lens of someone who can't talk. And how, what needs to be in place when you're thinking about those things that you approve? Because they're often, those students are often forgotten about, even though they have this law that protects them. When we think about things like that, they're often forgotten about. So I'm, I'm the nudge that always says to David, "And don't forget, and don't forget, and don't forget." So I just, I'd like to remind you guys not to forget those kids with disabilities as you're really going through all those things, because they, they have a right to be participating in all those things. I read a great policy thing today around personalized learning plans and IEPs and how they really need to be working together. So there's, and personalized learning plans can learn from the way we write IEPs, so, so don't forget about those kids. They're a little bit different. The, the 8% of kids or so in our district right now that have disabilities, we can learn from them and they can help you make really good decisions about the things you have to decide on.
And, and we have, as part of the ends, of course, it's not just career and college ready, but also for individual students' next step.
Yes.
You know, specifically understanding that next step might be to read, you know, and such, so...
Right, exactly. And we have a lot of our kids with disabilities now going on to college. There's some good opportunities for them. There's the college, there's Project Succeed, there's all kinds of stuff going on, so...
Thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
So moving, now moving on to the audit, yes.
So, this is again, both John and Joanne can talk a little bit more about this, but again, it's not really totally them. As you know, we've, we've traveled through, John would tell you, they've traveled through, I don't know, a couple of months of like intense audits, you know? Which is in part what we talked about in the calendar. But, you know, I'm going to say we work really hard to comply with the laws and regulations. It's sometimes open to, and probably wrongly stated, you know, interpretation of the rules. And so, but we're still subject to the auditor's interpretation or that, that. And so what you see in front of you is information specific to calendar year 2012, where, you know, we felt that we were making the right decision around the use of our consultants and the IRS concluded that we were not. And so there's a penalty here of $4,707.60. So I don't know, John or Joanne, more to explain specifically on that?
Sure. Well, I think you should know a little bit more. The, the IRS had, they were going to audit the whole calendar year of 2012, and so they had seven or eight items. And I was about ready to go into negotiations just in last October when he called. It was an hour phone call, so it was like, whoa.
So you were saved.
Saved for two weeks, but reconciliation of FICA records. Our records with IRS didn't agree and it was their problem. They looked at the percentage of our taxes withheld, and we showed them that a lot of our people saved through 403B plans. They looked at every accounts payable, 1099, all payroll records, employee reimbursements, use of cell phones, and consultant. So, so the audit was, was really good. I mean, they, once, once the auditor looked at how we keep our records and we're able to produce everything pretty easily, then there was focus on this area of occupational therapists and physical therapists that, and he had told us upfront that that's where he was going to focus. But in the meantime, they looked at every referee we've ever hired, other consultants and looked at them, and we, we pulled records and contracts, and he was satisfied that those weren't, weren't employees. And then the two consultants that are here, there were, and I have to say that Joanne and Amy do the test versus independent contractor versus employee. So we have that on file, and we showed the auditor that we had that on file for these employees and everyone else that you've hired as a consultant. And, but these two, two consultants had these characteristics that he said they had to be employees. One, they're integrated into the ongoing daily activities of the district. And that was, do we exercise behavior control over them, or is it separate? Do, do they? And they were determining that we, we, because of that, we were. Workers are integrated into the IEPs of each student, and it's written right in the contract. Workers are paid by the hour with a cap and are assigned specific hours, and the auditor said, "Well, that's an example of financial control we have over them." And finally, they've been here for a number of years, and my understanding, my understanding about that is they actually used to work for other districts and different, they split their time, but they actually enjoy working here, and we have a, a big need for them. So they look like employees because they're here all the time, and so those were the four, I, I gave you everything. I, you know, I don't, I like to fully disclose, but there's a lot of stuff here too, so I...
Can you get a legal opinion on that, John, on whether they're, you know, according to our attorneys, are they actually employees or are they independent contractors?
Well, we, we did it. I am concerned, I am concerned about the time we've already put into this. And if we then get a legal opinion and are spending money on money that they say we owe and, that's my concern. I, 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 I know that one person in my office and your people, um, um, Surinji in particular, have spent a lot of time on this. And I, I, I'm not sure it's worth pursuing it any further.
So when I think about the payables, I think about some of those people, and may, maybe this is who you're talking about, but that we pay on a regular basis.
Sure.
And so have we looked at all of those people to determine?
The IRS guy did, we did too.
Not just in special ed, but in other places too, in the district, yeah.
Oh yeah, all of them. For instance, the referees. You, when you see the list of, um, contractors that we were getting ready for the board, there are, I don't know, six hundred checks to referees, umpires, uh, judges. And they all work for a league. We pay them, but because they work for that league, they're not employees of the district. And that was, but we had to prove that. We had to get Ed Hockenberry down and show the league credentials and that kind of thing. So yes, our, our attorneys, our architects, they're all independent contractors. There, there wasn't a question on that. But the auditor seems to be handling this consistently with the, with the places that they audit. But our audit took four months, so it's not like they're getting around to every district in the state, so.
Is this a recurring audit that happens on a cycle?
No, no, this is a.
One timer?
I think random. There wasn't any, they weren't looking for.
So these, these people essentially work only for us?
They don't work for us at all. Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking about the IRS auditor. Yeah, these two do, they could work for someone else. They have all the.
In the past, they worked for other schools.
Yes, yes.
But they, they could also have a varied schedule where they work some for us and some.
Since two thousand and twelve, they haven't?
I, I don't think, I don't think.
My understanding is that was another criteria is that you had to essentially be one dominant employer.
Yes, that's right. And that's all they have been.
And that's still the case?
Yes.
And why is it that we're not exposed for the subsequent years between two thousand and twelve and?
I think the IRS rule realized that if they're going back to two thousand and twelve and if they disagree with how something's been handled and they start packing, packing on that interest, he explained it to us that it was a, I, I, in Georgia somewhere, there's this district that had a similar case. And it was four thousand dollar bill in two thousand and twelve and it wound up being a sixty thousand dollar bill. So the IRS says, look, we, we don't want to disrupt the operation. We want to make sure this is right in our eyes. So you have to pay the tax for the year we looked at. But you don't have to re, reclassify these people to employees until the January first of the complete year.
The next, the next.
January.
The next, the next January first.
Yeah.
So they're going to become employees as of that point in time?
Well, we had a question about that and, uh, uh, Joanne and I discussed it. I don't, I, one thing I don't know if they want to become our employee. And secondly, we have to come.
If they want to work here, they may not have a choice.
Well, I know, but I mean, we have to, we have to.
They have a choice to whether they're applying that, right? Based on the wages and options, you know?
And we'd have to classify those employees in, in, as employees and neither one of them come close to being a full-time.
Yeah, so point two and point three.
Yes, yes, see it's, see it's, that's why, that's why it's, it's, in my mind, it's not the minimum because four thousand bucks is a lot of money, but it's close, I guess.
But this is going to be ongoing?
Yes.
This additional?
Yes. And one other thing, we've, we've, in the last four or five years, I know Diane Bugby always asks us, do we, do we keep our contractors or do we bring them in as employees? And, and you've got.
I've built in.
Three or four.
Well, psychologists and board certified, we have our own.
House beneficial first.
Yeah, it's been good. And they're here, so they can do a lot more. But, but our OT and PT, they are here a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, they're very flexible, so they can do a lot, so.
Well, I haven't had the conversation with, I know Amity's gathered all the information and they had everything up to stuff, but I haven't had to, I wanted to make, I didn't want to talk to him until we had this, one way or the other.
You, you said something, Martin, I just want to be clear. Was it like this reoccurring? I wasn't sure what you meant by.
That this additional forty-seven hundred dollar cost is going to be recurring? No.
Well, we'll have to pay employer FICA and employer Medicare.
If they become employees, you'll have to ask, you'll have an increased cost.
Alright, so, so I, do I, do I need a motion to?
Yeah, yes.
Approve, um, the recommendations to remit this amount to the IRS, uh, the four thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and sixty cents?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
I have to make correction. I, I don't know why I did this, but.
We already voted.
Four, I know, that's why, four thousand seven oh seven fifty-nine, sorry.
Fifty-nine. So let the record reflect fifty-nine?
Yeah.
Let the record reflect fifty-nine.
Thank you, Joanne.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Alright, moving on to executive limitations, policy monitoring, two point eight.
Yes, and this is continued?
Where we are, this is continued as it's.
Yes. It's in your packet?
I, I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I don't know.
I, I think we, I don't think we went through it at all.
No, we didn't?
Oh, I, I missed the second.
No, we did, we did not. I mean, these were changes that we've made. We've not, so, not received any feedback from the board. And so this was fresh.
Are the changes in green or yellow?
Changes are in, um, for the period reporting, they're going to be, hmm.
They're yellow, yeah.
But it's a change for this year too?
Yeah.
So should we walk through each of these items or did everybody have a chance to look at this and have any specific questions?
So we're speaking on compensation and benefits right now, Bert?
Correct, on two point eights.
I thought we had discussed this before.
It was in, it's been in your packet, Pat, so it's likely you've reviewed it. It was, it showed up two meetings ago. We deferred it last meeting.
We did talk about this. We were talking about this because, didn't we talk about this? Because I remember having this discussion about the one, um, the overall policy being in non-compliance because of detail policy five or whatever. Yeah, or no, detail policy two.
It suggests that the board reviewed it.
Yeah, we did have a conversation.
I don't think we talked a lot about it though. I'm just, there was a change there, um, so there's some quick highlights in it. I don't.
Yeah.
Didn't spend a lot of time. I mean.
And you had, and you had reached out to the individual that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so there, at least it may have been just the questions and your responses when it's been up.
Alright, so, so with respect to the first item, to change the superintendent's own compensation and benefits, was it a reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yep.
Alright, and the second one, promise or imply permanent or guaranteed employment, was the interpretation reasonable?
Yes.
Was there adequate data?
Yes.
But there was not compliance, is that correct?
Right.
And did we, uh, accept the compliance plan?
Yes.
Hearing no, no. Number three, establish or change compensation and benefits that deviate materially from the geographical or professional market median for skills employed. Was it a reasonable interpretation? Hearing no objections. I will say yes. Uh, was the data adequate?
Yes.
No objections. Uh, and was in compliance?
Yes.
Fourth is create obligations over a longer term than revenues can be safely projected, in no event longer than one year. And in all events, subject to losses in revenue, is the interpretation reasonable?
Yes.
And was there adequate data?
Yes.
And compliance?
Yes.
We'll agree to that. And, uh, number five, uh, establish or change pension benefits, was it a reasonable interpretation?
Yep.
Was the data adequate?
Yes.
And was it in compliance?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have the overall, which we have that, well, let's see, reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yep.
Yep.
But not in compliance because the one was in compliance, correct?
Right.
And we were fine or not with the compliance plan?
Yes.
Awesome. Right, so we move on to three point two, accountability of the superintendent?
Right, and so I've provided the board with the start of that. And, um, again, as you see on your calendar, um, we have both, um, two point nine and three point two. So I'll be providing the board with additional information, um, regarding, um, my evaluation.
Right.
So, I don't know.
So we'll get that before the next meeting, David?
And are we doing that in executive session, next meeting or?
I'll have it on executive session and then obviously it's a public session matter around, uh, board actions, findings, et cetera, as we've done in the past. So I will, as I said, I'll, I'll provide the, uh, additional summary of, of the work.
Okay, so moving right on then to number eleven, setting the agenda, so should we add to the executive session superintendent evaluation?
Yep.
And you're going to have in there, um, so it's already in there actually for May sixth. Martin?
Oh yeah, you're a step ahead.
Wow.
Alright, excellent.
No, I'm not, but somebody else has, greatly says.
I've said you in the broader sense.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Delina.
So we can take, uh, two point eight off, correct?
Right.
Correct.
Anything else that we need to add or take off?
I mean, are we going to be able to do two, first of all, we're not going to do three point two in public session next time?
We'd report out after.
Yeah, you should keep it on.
We won't be done.
But you should keep it on because it's a conversation that you're having and just reporting to the.
Are we going to be able to do two point seven and two point one?
Well, I think two seven, two seven, yes. And, um, three two is, you know, is going to be up to you on how much you want to talk about that.
I say we. Should cram, yeah, I should, well, not cram, but I think it's, it's not that heavy of a schedule otherwise.
Yep.
And we've got, if this master planning thing is going to be coming in June, we probably want to get stuff out of the way in May as much as possible.
Yep.
As a net, do we need to take continued off asset protection for, for May, since we haven't started yet?
Uh, yeah, continue needs to be take off. It's such, going to be our first, first. So can I suggest either for this next meeting or the one after that we get Paul Connor in here to give us an update on?
Yep, he, he is coming.
Yeah, he's coming.
So we got to add that to there. He's coming and we said we can put him in, um, right around seven fifteen. He, he, he's confirmed, and when this went out, we didn't yet have confirmation. So Paul Connor is coming on May sixth and we'll put him in right after seven fifteen.
And what's, I, I, can you just say for the benefit of everybody watching what he's going to be talking about?
And, and your new, new board member?
Yeah, so Paul Connor is the director of planning and zoning. And, um, he, we had a desire, just so you know, that given our current configuration, it wasn't, I forget how long ago, we went through kind of the, uh, Rick Marcot Central School, um, form-based coast, code zoning and, and being zoned T four. So we had some conversation around that property, but more globally, the desire was to have Paul come in and share with us current realities on our current properties, how they're zoned. And, um, information about kind of the, the city zoning from a contextual perspective. And you, and giving you the board information about if you want to make changes. Process. So that's, that's really the, the purpose of him coming to this meeting.
But just to clarify, make very clear, the board can't change the zoning.
Nope, it's about process by which you might go through to advocate for a possible change. You can't make the changes, right?
Right. Good, excellent.
So that's, so that's what's happening.
So school zoning essentially is what the topic is.
Yeah. I kind of, I kind of gave him about, um, I said around thirty minutes or so.
Yeah, I think, I think there should be a lot of questions.
Yeah. And he's happy to come.
Good, excellent.
Yep.
Excellent. So, um, not going to take any future agenda items off at the moment, but, um, so just to, not to backtrack too much, but when we see the schedule again, the yearly agenda, if you can work.
Those in there?
These into the ends monitoring as we've discussed.
Mm-hmm. So they come off, yeah.
I, I have a couple of things. There, there are a number of RFPs that we would have bid results back. So they're usually consent agenda item, but there's, uh, there'll be at least six, so. And then Dan is working with Amity and Tom Hubbard and Tom Chittinen on the audit committee. And there may be a recommendation on that, um, for this meeting.
We're, so, not the meeting on Friday and the following Monday, the council is supposed to accept it.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, so it's, I mean, that's the calendar right now.
Yeah, so it's going to be a report anyway here because the council has.
Yeah, it would be a report of the status, which would be.
So John, would, would you like to recommend that with the number of bids that we have going on, that maybe a couple of board members would review them ahead of time? Because if there's questions on, you know, we got eight bids coming forward under the consent agenda?
Uh, if, if.
I mean, I'm, I'm just, I mean, if there are questions specific to the, the bid recommendations, I mean, we haven't really talked about this, so. But it might be advantageous that a couple of board members just look at the bid, so if somebody, if a question is.
Somewhere before it goes to the whole board.
Right.
Yeah.
But maybe it will be self-explanatory in the board.
Can't we just ask, can't we just ask questions regularly?
Yeah, I think the, the issue that John's bringing up is that the volume of, of bids.
The only, the only, um, the remediation of the big picture area, that, those bids are coming in Friday. We actually got some really encouraging bids today on the windows and the PCB disposal. So those will be good, but, uh, if there's questions about the, um, the big picture area, that's an important one. Because if, if the board isn't satisfied that night, it would really delay us.
Right.
So, so.
So can we get it before, like?
Sure.
I mean, can you send that to us separately or something electronically?
Mm-hmm.
We can give, we can send to the board as soon as we have it so that you can review it.
And then we can ask our questions in more times that you could.
Yeah.
Respond if there was problems.
Yeah, I, I think you'll be, I mean, I think most of them are fairly self-explanatory, but, because we got a lot of them.
Oh, gosh.
People start wanting to like, what? And these are important things for the board to be informed about, you know, we have a lot of activity going on.
So these, we're expecting up to eight within what timeframe?
Uh, between now and, um, some, some of the bids are already in and we just have to write them up. And then it would be, uh, next week, it won't be getting much from me because I won't be here, but the week after, early in the week, which is Monday, Tuesday, before May sixth, uh, yeah, so April thirty.
And it would not be advantageous for us to delay that, you know, so if it was like, had question, to delay those, then start to set us back around the timetable for the beginning of the work.
Right. So for the May sixth board meeting, we're thinking we're going to have quite a few?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Alright, uh, moving on to considering the minutes.
Just to, was I clear that the, we're scheduled to meet on April, on May first, which is a Friday. And the council is scheduled to meet on May fourth to make a decision.
On the audit day.
On the audit day. So what can be available on the sixth is just.
A report.
Who the select, who is selected?
Yeah, verbal, sure.
Okay.
Should be short.
Should be. Never know though.
Never know, never know, that's true. Um, so considering the minutes of the meeting of April first, are there any, um, changes or concerns?
None.
Alright, by consensus, the minutes for April first, two thousand and fifteen are accepted. Uh, moving on to the minutes for the meeting on April sixth.
One typo on page three, uh, the, the heading of discussion items is just misspelled.
Page three. Three.
It's the value add I bring.
Oh, yeah. Well, in that case, if, in that case, I'm going to. I'm going to one-up you and on page four, there, there's a, there's an and that should be an and.
You guys need more to do.
Uh, under, uh, Mr. Young and Mr. Lulon provided and. Under Mr. Young and Mr. Lolo provided and update.
I wasn't gonna bring that one up, but.
So with those changes, is this accepted by consensus, the so amended minutes from April 6th are accepted, moving on to the April 8 minutes, any concerns, questions, changes? By consensus, those are also accepted, am I allowed to sign these if I, if I wasn't at these meetings, is that still fine as acting chair?
If you can have Julie do them.
Yeah, so I do, I do sign them, then you as acting clerk.
You're approving because we voted.
Yep, got you, okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
You have one addition in here, right?
We have one agenda, yeah, one addition, Jake Orr. So should I take a motion or just do this by, since we have new hires?
Well, again, usually, usually what we do here is, you know, as far as the resignation, so it's all under consent agenda, you've added Jake Orr, I, I would just say, you know, obviously, the resignation and retirements, there are people in here that are shorter, short, shorter service representatives than others, Carrie Towne has been a long time, school nurse here in our middle school, and I just would so note that, you know, she's, she's been a great asset to our.
Absolutely.
To our school and our district, as a school nurse, and, you know, on behalf of the board, I would like just to make sure she receives that recognition.
Yep, absolutely, so there being no objections, that is also by consensus, the consent agenda is adopted, accounts payable orders, any questions on those that weren't answered otherwise, no, can I take a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Great. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it.